Good morning, everyone. It's 9:05 and called to order our public hearing, receiving public comment on proposed changes to Golden Gate Transit bus routes as identified in Marin-Sonoma Coordinated Transit Service mascot plan. Before we begin, please note that this meeting is being recorded. Members of the public are encouraged to listen to the meeting by dialing in at 415-569-4446 for the audio of the meeting. If you would like to provide public comment of today's, please call 415-569-6446 and let the facilitator know you would like to speak. Madam Secretary, please call.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Director Devlin.
Here.
In guardio. Sapsen.
Garperino.
Here.
Judache.
Here.
Hardeman. Sapsen. Hernandez. Sapsen. Mastin.
Here.
Multimetres.
Here.
Parr.
President.
Parrish.
Here.
Rodoni.
Here.
Saunders. Sapsen. Snyder.
Here.
Fear. Sapsen. Second Vice President Rabbin.
Sapsen. First Vice President Hill.
Here.
And President Cochran.
Here.
Thank you. You have a call.
Thank you. For joining us this morning, we appreciate your continued patience when we conduct the district business in this manner. If you are not speaking, please use your device to minimize the noise on today's calls. Madam Secretary, please summarize the public outreach effort for the public hearing.
Thank you. In compliance with district policy, public outreach was undertaken as follows. A notice of public hearing was posted to the district's website on July 21st. Legal notices were published in the Marin Independent Journal, Press Democrat on July 30, July 31, and August 14th, also published in the Petaluma Argus Courier on Friday, August 1, and August 8, also published in La Prentice-Sonoma on Friday, August 1, as well as on the LeVos website, referencing social media posts and weekly reports from July 30 to August 21. E-blasts were sent to customers on August 6, posted on Facebook, X formerly known as Twitter, on August 6, and LinkedIn on August 6. The presentation was also made available in Spanish as per the district's language implementation plan.
Terry Manolis, as the public outreach described, and District Secretary, meet the district's legal requirements for calling the public hearing.
Absolutely, yes, President Company.
Madam Secretary, has there been any further on the proposal?
As close of business yesterday, we received 32 comments relative to the topic of this hearing, and any further comments relative to the public hearing will be presented to the appropriate committee at that time and forwarded to the Board of Directors at its meeting on September 26.
Proceeding with public hearing record planning, Ron Downing will provide the district's presentation. Ron, I will now hand things over to you.
Good morning, Director Cochran, members of the board. Today, I will give you a brief overview of the proposal before you at this public hearing about mascots. It's the Marin-Sonoma Coordinated Transportation Service Plan. It comes out of a great deal of coordination on the Bay Area's transit operators since the pandemic, and we have been looking at travel chan-trains, changes. We've told you that things are different now. People aren't going to San Francisco in the same volumes that they used to, and our service is very different from what it was pre-pandemic. Staff had contemplated doing our own service analysis to try to adjust things to contemporary conditions. However, this effort came along in the North Bay and Marin-Sonoma to do a comprehensive look at the transit system using all of the transit operators together as if we were functioning as one body. It was a very data-driven analysis, looking at current ridership, looking at projections under planned Bay Area 2050-plus. One of the most salient observations of this is about 70% of the forecasted travel demand to San Francisco comes from San Rafael South to go to the city. Nevada contributes another 18%, and so the remainder is from Sonoma, which is a very different pattern from what we observed 20 years ago when a lot of people did commute from Sonoma to San Francisco. So again, like I said, it's data-driven. We had a consultant come in from the outside, from the Nelson Nygaard office in Seattle. Good to have another set of eyes from outside the region looking at all this. He came up with some recommendations, and your staff took a look at those and verified ridership patterns and came up with the proposal just before you today. It does change very significantly how people would travel in the North Bay, within the North Bay, and also to San Francisco. One of the most important observations has been that the Smart Train has emerged as the preferred mode of travel between Sonoma and Marin connecting to San Francisco. They are growing ridership. They're faster. They're cheaper. Our Route 101 service is not carrying large numbers of riders. And being cognizant of using our resources effectively, this proposal keeps approximately the same number of service hours on the street. There's some service hours above that that are added to the Smart Train to fill in some of the service gaps right now. What we will do with Route 101 is concentrate the service on that route from San Rafael South. We will operate 15-minute service during weekday peak periods between San Rafael and San Francisco, 30-minute peak service from Nevada that join those buses in San Rafael, half-hourly service throughout the day in off-peak periods during the midday evenings and on weekends on Route 101 South. We're doing that because the Smart Train doesn't run on regular frequencies. It arrives every 32 minutes during the peaks, and so 15-minute frequencies on our Route 101 connection will minimize the wait time for people. South of San Rafael, we currently have two, what we call basic all-day bus routes, the 130 and the 150 that serve all the freeway bus paths between San Rafael and Marin City. The 130 continues through Sausalito. The 150 goes up and over the Waldo Grade. Both of those converge again at the bridge and continue into San Francisco on the Ben Nest Lombard Quarter. And looking at that ridership, their freeway bus pad ridership going to San Francisco is virtually non-existent now, and the consultant has recommended that we take the Route 130 resources and the Route 150 resources and double down on service from Marin City to San Francisco through Sausalito. There will be very frequent bus service at those freeway bus paths south of San Rafael provided by Marin Transit, and that the people that want to make that trip into San Francisco will be able to make a connection at Marin City to continue on the 130. A couple other elements of the plan. The consultant took a hard look at our community service in Sonoma County from Santa Rosa, Ronan Park, Petaluma into San Francisco. We have three different services running in that area. He recommended that we only need one route instead of three. We had introduced a Route 164 serving East Petaluma, going through downtown Petaluma. That route just hasn't panned out for us, and so the consultant recommended that we fold those resources into a single route for ease of rider understanding and to try to boost the ridership with a higher frequency than the individual routes separately would have. The other part of the proposal is our Richmond Bridge Bus. That is Route 580. It has some express trip variants right now that do not serve East San Rafael, but instead operate on the 580 freeway. The recommendation is to improve the travel time for people going between San Rafael and the East Bay by putting all of those trips on the 580 freeway. Marin Transit local service would backfill some of the East San Rafael coverage on that Just make sure I've got everything here. So really, what the whole crux of this proposal is, is to simplify route alignments, is to make it easier for the customer to understand so they don't have to be looking for multiple routes that may be serving the same stops in the same quarter. So the mascot's proposal has a lesser number of routes running more frequently. We are putting service where the demand exists for that service, and we're hoping to grow ridership on those key routes that have potential. Apart from those proposed changes, the consultant did look at the other routes in our Golden Gate Transit bus and Golden Gate Berry service and said that all of those routes are doing what they're supposed to and did not recommend any changes on those routes. There are other changes contemplated by Marin Transit. They are waiting to go forward to their proposal until the public outreach is completed, and they will be coming back to their board in October. Our next action would be at the September board meetings after staff has distilled all of the comments that we receive. We will be coming back with a proposal that may have modifications based on the merit of those comments. The comment period is still open through tomorrow, COB. We had two virtual public workshops yesterday. We had about six people at each one, so we had a total of about 12 additional comments that were not reflected in AMRIT's tally. So again, we're looking forward to having more comments from the public on how they feel about this proposal, and we'll take a look at all of that and bring something back to you in September.
Thank you, Ron. Are there any additional comments by SAP? No other additional comments? Since this is a public hearing, it is to receive public comments on the subject matter. I am asking my colleagues to hold their comments or questions for SAP until the matter returns to your brokerage committee. At that time, give your comments. Before we begin, Madam Secretary, how many people do we have on today's?
We have three speakers in the room, and then we have about another six, I believe, that are online or checking still, but we will need a moment to pull again because about 13 callers have called in since the meeting started, so they may want to speak. So after Justine does the first six, she's going to probably want to pull those callers too, just in case we want to capture everybody who wants to speak today. So we're going to move into that process now, so I'm just going to remind everyone that we're going to call everyone up one speaker at a time, and appreciate it if you stay on topic. And if possible, we'd like you to state your name, and if you're representing an organization, state the name of the organization, and please honor the three-minute comment period allowed for your speaker. There's a timer button and a light that will go off and turn red when your three minutes are up, so if you could do your best, we can accom- we should be able to accommodate everyone with no problem today. Justine will be doing the comments on the public line, so I'll start with Eileen Malloy. I believe, Eileen Malloy, you join us. There you go.
Ron, if you could give her that chair.
Yeah. And then move over to the next one. There you go. Okay. Perfect. Welcome, Ms. Malloy.
Okay. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I did a few handwritten notes, but don't panic. Do not, I'm not going to talk as long as the notes. My name is Eileen Malloy, and I reside in Santa Rosa, California. I moved to Sonoma County from San Francisco in 1990. One reason I was able and willing to make the change was the regularly reliable bus connections by Golden Gate Transit between Santa Rosa and San Francisco from very early in the morning to quite late in the evening. Those of you who've been here for a while will know how very, very late they did run back at that point in time. I do not own a car, so I'm a huge supporter and consumer of public transit, and I believe I have used every transit agency involved in the proposal under discussion over those years. I very much support coordination between the agencies and am delighted this whole effort has been undertaken. Minimizing redundancy in service is a good thing, although more so when it frees up resources to expand services on high-traffic routes. But I am very concerned by what the proposals mean with regard to Golden Gate Transit and Sonoma County. And I, what I'm going to say, I don't mean, I don't mean it as criticism, but just a statement of how I see the situation. Based on what I have heard, effectively, aside from morning and evening San Francisco commuter rush hour service during the week, Golden Gate Transit would no longer be serving Sonoma County outside that service. I'm sorry if I'm incorrect, but this is what I have gleaned. From all the other reasons people in Marin and Sonoma use and need public transit, going both ways, north and south, and back and forth, maybe super-enhanced service on Smart and well-coordinated county or local feeder buses, as indicated in the proposal, could, I hope, work as an integrated system that will give residents overall mobility as good as what we have now, perhaps even better. No one will be happier about that outcome than I would be. There's one glaring exception to that optimistic scenario, though, and it's late-evening service between San Francisco and Sonoma County. The proposal would have the last bus out of San Francisco that can connect with the last and northbound Smart Train out of San Rafael. That bus would be leaving downtown about 9 o'clock, as I understand. What happens to a resident of Sonoma County who has any kind of business or activity in San Francisco that ends at around 10:00 or 10:30? It could be work. It could be a cultural activity. It could be all kinds of things. I would strongly recommend maintaining service between San Francisco and Sonoma County, this is on Golden Gate Transit, that extends the last departure, departing bus, 101 bus, from the sales force in San Francisco to at least 11:00 PM, and then having it do the full run to Santa Rosa to fill the gap after the Smart Train stops running. It's the only way to maintain that connection, evening connection, real evening connection between Sonoma County and San Francisco. And anyone who doesn't have a car, who cannot drive, whatever, has, really doesn't have any feasible alternative. Coordination is good. Eliminating redundancy is good, but please do not truncate evening transportation on the corridor in this extreme way. Thank you for your attention. I'm very glad to have had the opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you, Ms. Malloy. Our next speaker is Shane Weinstein.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. My name is Shane Weinstein, President of ACU 1575. I represent the bus operators who keep this region moving, but today I'm here for the people who will be left behind if you approve mascots as it's written. This plan is a one-shot, take-your-leaving proposal with zero alternatives. That's not transparency. That's not public process. That's a predetermined outcome being forced on the communities you're sworn to serve. The single most devastating blow is the plan is the creation of a late-night transit desert between Marin and Sonoma Counties. When Smart stops running, mascots eliminates Golden Gate Transit Route 101 north of Nevada, leaving no public transportation from roughly 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM on the weekdays and even earlier on the weekends. The need is real. The public is counting on us. We understand that the last three trips, I'm sorry, the last trip of the three coming out of San Francisco currently stops in San Rafael, but let's be clear, this was a pandemic era cut made in March of 2021 at the height of COVID when ridership was at its lowest. Today, with ridership increasing, it is necessary more than ever for the last three trips of the evening to continue up to Santa Rosa. Without those trips, that means stranded night shift nurses and hospital staff, restaurant and hotel workers with no way home, students and seniors left in the cold, low-income residents forced into costly ride shares or dangerous late-night walks. These aren't empty buses. These are lifelines. Public transit is, does not exist to turn a profit. It exists to make sure that the one person who needs a ride at midnight can get home safely. Stripped out of way, and you force people into cars, more DUIs, more fatigue-related crashes, and more pollution. In Sonoma County, entire communities will be cut off from the regional network after dark. That's not progress, that's abandonment. And the damage doesn't stop there. One-seat rides were replaced with long, unreliable transfer chains. Key stops were eliminated, forcing people with disabilities, parents, and children to work, to walk further, reduced access to San Francisco for workers, patients, and visitors, and direct hit on our local economies and a disproportionate burden on low-income and transit-dependent riders. Let me be clear, this plan fails the basic test of public service. It strips away access, equity, and safety in exchange for efficiency that serves spreadsheets, not people. I'm calling on you to reject mascots as it stands. Demand real alternatives. Protect late-night Route 101 whenever Smart isn't running, and insist on a transparent, inclusive process that listens to every community in your jurisdiction. You are the last line of defense for the riders you represent. Do not rubber stamp a plan that will leave thousands stranded and communities disconnected. Stand up for transit as a public good that it is and send Golden Gate and the mascots back to the drawing board. Just very clear, by Ron's numbers, it would save 10 minutes going from Santa Rosa to San Francisco on a one-seat ride on 101. It would now be multiple transfers. You could be waiting 90 minutes on weekends for between trains. That's not acceptable. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Herrera. I'm sorry, Mr. Weinstein. We are going to have Mr. Herrera.
We're on this.
I was looking at David and then put Shane at the same.
Thank you. Good morning, members of the board. My name is David Herrera, and I serve as a Secretary and Treasurer of Amalgamated Transit Union Local 1575, representing the bus operators here at the Bridge District. I am also a proud bus operator for the past 24 years here at the district. Today, I am not speaking to you as a union officer or even a union officer or even as an employee, but as a representative of the community that would be directly impacted by the proposed reductions in early and late, late-night bus service under the mascot's plan. My concern is that this plan leaves a whole demographic stranded with no real options. I know this firsthand because I was once part of this demographic. At one point in my life, I depended entirely on late-night bus service to get to my job and do 10 nights' work at the J.C. Without these routes, I would not have been able to work or complete my studies. Then, when I first started here at Golden Gate Transit, I drove these late-night E-U runs from San Francisco to San Rosa. It is true, at 2:03 in the morning, the buses weren't packed, but these riders who were there were very deeply grateful because that service was their only lifeline to get home or to get to work. So I ask you, as board members and stewards of your community, to weigh the real human cost of these proposed cuts. The mascot's plan may look efficient on paper, but the damage will be, that will cause to people's lives and opportunities is very real. Please do not let this plan turn late-night riders into forgotten riders. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers in the room that would like to speak before we move on to public commenters on the audio line? I don't see anyone. Okay, then we are going to move on to the audio line. Justine, I'm going to facilitate the number of speakers that you have on your line.
Devlin, thank you. Good morning. Our first speaker this morning is David Pillpal. David, please go ahead.
Great. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Good morning. David Pillpal from San Francisco. I participated in both of yesterday's open houses on the subject plan and asked a number of questions. I am preparing a comment letter to the district clarifying and expanding my comments and questions. Here are the important points. The district has, for more than 50 years, provided high-quality bus and ferry transit services to offer options and manage congestion in the 101 corridor in Marin and Sonoma Counties. Those services have evolved over time and continue to, based largely on economic and travel activity. As to quality, that includes clean, safe buses that operate reliably in coordination with other agencies. That coordination among transit operators is an ongoing effort involving fares, information, operations, and schedules, among other factors, to encourage public transit use in the North Bay and elsewhere. While elements of the mascot's plan have value and should be pursued, the 32-minute frequency on Smart makes a regular forced transfer between systems asymmetrical, lengthy, and uncertain. I would defer that change until Smart can operate a 30-minute frequency with proper passing sightings. The other main concern is about replacement service that is promised by other agencies but not yet clear. Marin Transit's process is at least a month behind Golden Gate. Smart says that they will add eight trips a day, weekdays and weekends, but I've not seen the schedule, and I have no idea what Sonoma County Transit plans for its Route 44 and 48, which parallel Golden Gate's Route 101 with more local stops. Other concerns include the passenger amenities at each transfer point, Southern Marin transfers through Marin City, the Spencer Avenue bus pad, and equity impacts. Please note that most transit trips involve transfers and do not start and end at transfer points. Transit passengers who would lose service here have no other options. I agree strongly that early-morning and late-night bus service in both directions should be maintained. The bridge does not shut down at 9:00 PM. Golden Gate Transit service to and from the North Bay should not either. I appreciate the staff and consultant work on this project, but I just think that some elements are just not ready. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker this morning is Tate Bow. Tate, please go ahead.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So I'm going to try to make this three minutes possible. Okay. What is going on is that regarding Line 101 discontinuing in Sonoma County due to low ridership, I wish it would not discontinue, but that's not the only thing that bothers me. The other thing that bothers me the most is that Smart Train, Sonoma-Marin Area Rail Transit, is not operating 365 days a year, which are, it does not operate on New Year's Day, Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas Day. And I looked up some old articles and found out that it used to operate 365 days a year prior to the coronavirus pandemic. If that is true, then I wish Smart Train should operate 365 days a year if, in case Line 101 of Golden Gate Transit is discontinued in Sonoma County, because people need access to their jobs, not just in Sonoma County but also Marin County, because people could live in Sonoma County and they needed, need access to Marin County to get access to their jobs, because all the other public transit agencies in Sonoma County don't operate 365 days a year, and that is not fair for, for Smart Train not to operate on any of those three holidays either. So I'm okay if it stops operating early and cannot operate until midnight like Line 101 of Golden Gate Transit, but I would really be happier for everyone who needs access to their jobs, even for people with disabilities, if they can have access to Smart Train and any of the bus, line buses of Golden Gate Transit that operate 365 days a year so they can have access to their jobs. And because if they don't have access to their jobs on those holidays, including New Year's Day, Thanksgiving, and Christmas Day, that they can have their jobs. That is all I have. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker this morning is Olga Iskharzov. Olga, please go ahead.
Olga, you need to unmute your. Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Olga Iskharzov, and I'm a proud bus operator for Golden Gate Transit, a resident of Sonoma County and the daughter of Teresa Vakenna, who many of you know gave more than 30 years of her life to this district. I may be newer to this rank, but I worked the late-night 101 runs, and I see firsthand how essential they are. Every night, I carry nurses coming off long shifts, restaurant workers heading home, and students who don't have another option. These are not empty buses. These are people who depend on us. But under mascot, once Smart stops running, every late-night 101 will be eliminated. That means no way home between Marin and Sonoma Counties overnight. It forces riders, including my own mother, to take Smart and walk long distances to get where they need to go, when before the bus came much closer. At 72 years old, that walk is a burden, and as a mother myself, riding with my children, I worry about the safety of families who are now left with no reasonable option. I see this from two sides, as an operator and as a rider. As an operator, I see the need every single night. As a rider, I feel what it means to lose service we count on. This plan creates a transit desert in Sonoma County, and it sends a message that people who travel and it sends a message that people who travel at night don't matter. I urge you to think about the workers who make our communities run, the seniors, the seniors who deserve safe access, and the families like mine who depend on this trip. We cannot abandon public. Please do not approve mascot as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Teresa Iskierdo. Teresa, go ahead, please.
Good morning. This is Teresa Vakenna, and I am 72 years old. Now I ride 101 as a member of the public with my grandchildren. With mascot, once Smart stops running, all late-night 101.
Teresa, can you speak up, please? I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we're having a hard time hearing you. Can you speak up?
Okay, was I over, or do I just continue?
Yes, if you can, I'll allow you to restart, but we really cannot hear you. It's very faint.
Okay. Good morning. Can you hear me now?
Let's try. Go ahead. Go ahead.
This is Teresa Vakenna. I am 72 years old, a resident of Sonoma County. I worked over 30 years as Golden Gate Transit bus operator. Now I ride Route 101 as a member of the public with my grandchildren. With mascot, and once Smart stops running, late-night 101 service disappears. That leaves no way to travel between Marin and Sonoma County overnight. I am now forced to rely on Smart, and that means walking long distances to and from stations when before the bus came closer. At my age, this is a struggle, and for families, seniors, and people with disabilities, it can make the trip impossible. I know those late-night riders. I drove them for years. They are hospital staff, resident workers, students, and seniors who need safe, reliable service, not longer walks and fewer options. Please don't approve the plan as it stands. Protect the people of Sonoma County. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mizo Flor. Mizo, please go ahead.
Hello, good morning. I'm going to reiterate some of the, a lot of the things that have been said already about the 101 bus. My name is Mizo Flor, and I live in San Francisco. And I do not own a car, but I often commute up to Rohnert Park to play in the Center of the Symphony. And during concert weeks, that involves six days of rehearsals and concerts, and five of those I finish at 10:00 p.m. and return home on the final southbound 101 bus. In the current proposal, there's no alternative for returning home, even if the later end of Smart service, the last train, will be far too early to be abused. If this change is made, I will be left with no way to return home from work without a car. And I know that I'm not the only person in this situation, as there are always other people on the bus when I ride it, as well as all the people who've commented on this issue today. I urge you to please consider preserving at least the last few trips of the 101 north of Nevada after the last Smart train, or to create a Smart Owl bus to cover the same span of day as the 101. We shouldn't be taking away these options that people rely on to get home from work at unusual hours. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Matthew Corbett. Matthew, go ahead.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Matthew Corbett. I'm a now-retired bus operator of 28 years. I cannot reiterate what the people have already said any further. Simple fact is that canceling the 101 is going to be a huge mistake. Many people rely on that service, especially late-night service. I knew those people. I rode with those people. I drove those people home. And they need that service. As far as the commute service goes, discontinuing that service to Pine Road is eliminating a very functional and useful parking rides lot that people rely on who come in from Windsor and Hillsburg to commute down to catch the 172. The simple fact that the 176, the 76 route, was not replaced after COVID, and you guys decided that it was low ridership that's killing the 164, well, you put back a route that wasn't functional. The fact that a lot of the routes did not return to normal service after COVID goes to say that you, you know, you're saying the riders didn't return. Well, you didn't return the buses that people could ride on. That's the 24 route, the 54 route, the 76 route. Those were all heavily-used routes that you didn't bring back, so people couldn't use them, so you just canceled them. That makes no sense to me. And the final point is that you guys and mascot and other services never surveyed and never came and talked to the people actually drove these routes. I never got questioned. No one that I know of at Golden Gate Transit got asked their opinion and what their options are and whatnot about these service cuts. It's just like you're just casting these passengers and the bus drivers aside like we don't matter. And it's a pretty sad deal. Golden Gate Transit could be so much more than it is, so much more than it is. But nobody wants to do it. That's the end of my commentary. But I hope you guys reconsider this change to the 101 service. Now that the Highway 101 construction is almost finished, travel times will improve, considering the fact that the train fares are heavily subsidized, making the comparative fares between Golden Gate Transit and the bus service, you can't compare apples and oranges when that train's fare are so subsidized that we cannot compete. That's the end of my comments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. At this time, I have no other speakers, but I would like to poll the room.
Sure, go ahead.
Perfect. If you have comments this morning for the public hearing, I'll need you to unmute yourself by hitting star star on your phone, pressing star star. And then I need everybody to go in order. So if you have public comment this morning, please press star star to unmute yourself and give me your name for the speaker queue.
Yeah, good morning. My name is Jack Buckhorn with the North Bay Labor Council.
Thanks, Jack. I'll add you to the speaker queue if you can just bear with me. Will the next person please unmute themselves? Let me know if you have comments this morning. Please press star star on your phone to come through the system. If there's anybody else that would like to speak this morning on their public comment, please press star star on your own phone to come through the system and let me know. Okay, I'm not hearing anybody else this morning. Jack, please go ahead.
Great. Thank you, and good morning, directors and staff. My name is Jack Buckhorn. I'm the Executive Director of the North Bay Labor Council, representing over 70,000 working families. I'm going to keep this short because you've heard the comments loud and clear. We would ask that mascot be reconsidered with regard to late-night and early-morning bus routes. It's just inconceivable that, in the name of efficiency, that we would create this travel desert and not give workers and other seniors and folks the ability to travel between Marin, Sonoma, and the Greater Bay Area during these hours. So please reconsider the dropping of the 101 routes in late-night and early-morning. With that, I appreciate the work you're doing to make transit more efficient overall, but we've got to maintain these services. Thank you for your time this morning.
We have no other speakers this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. That, if there's no other speakers online, we will close the public hearing. Madam Secretary, please summarize the next step in this process.
Thank you. The comment period will close tomorrow at 4:30 on August 22. And just to be honest, we will still receive your public comments if you submit anything after that. We're not one to just have a hard line on that one. But we would advise that to get it into the staff recommendation or to be considered that it be sent in a little earlier. Staff's going to evaluate all comments received and determine whether or not changes or modifications need to be made to the proposal. Final recommendation, that includes a summary of the public comments received will be presented in September. And if necessary, any recommendations will also be presented to the appropriate committee at that time.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for joining us this morning. With that, that concludes the public hearing. The time is 9:45.